This is a continuation of the public hearing in regards to the budget. The two, would you please read the titles of the resolution and budget? We don't have to do that?
Okay.
We're going to dispense with that and ask the next department, which is the Department of Human Services, to approach the witness table. So if you could pull that mic a little closer to you and state your name for the record, and please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Garrett-Harley, Commissioner for the Department of Human Services.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Clark in his absence, Councilman Jones, members of city council. I am Vanessa Garrett-Harley, Commissioner of the Department of Human Services. With me today, to my left, is Kimberly Ali, my Chief Implementation Officer for Improving Outcomes for Children, and to my right is the Acting Deputy Commissioner for Finance, Janelle Hines, as well as other members of my leadership team. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. DHS's fiscal year 16 general grants revenue budget request is for $673,558,375. This is $510,929 below the FY '15 estimated obligation level of $674,69,304. DHS's general fund budget request is $102,729,321. I would like to highlight a few of DHS's accomplishments this year, as well as share some of the challenges that we faced. During fiscal year '15, DHS continued on the path of implementation of Improving Outcomes for Children. As you know, Improving Outcomes for Children, or IOC as we call it, is based on a belief that a community-based delivery of child welfare services will result in a better quality of services for children and families, which will ultimately lead to better outcomes. I am proud to say that at this point, we have opened all 10 Community Umbrella Agencies. They are accepting cases and providing services to the children and families of Philadelphia. While we are still in the process of transitioning cases from DHS to the Community Umbrella Agencies, we have reached the point that more cases are with the COUAs. In fact, as of March 31, 2015, 3,618 families are being serviced by the COUAs. One of the core components of the IOC transformation is family team conferencing, a process by which the family is given a voice in their child welfare case. These conferences, which occur for the most part in the community, are held throughout the life of a case at key decision-making points. Families are encouraged to attend these conferences with their support system. Social service professionals from various disciplines, such as behavioral health, education, and physical health, also attend the conferences when appropriate. Since the inception of IOC in January of 2013, DHS has facilitated over 6,000 conferences. I'm also proud to say that this year, we have expanded our presence in and support for the community and our education system by increasing our collaboration with the school district of Philadelphia. This year, we co-located 10 social work service managers in Philadelphia School District Schools and assigned them to work with the Community Umbrella Agencies in their regions. This staff is responsible for helping to remove educational barriers for children involved with DHS and for assisting school staff with making linkages to DHS services when appropriate. We also have a social work service manager assigned to the school district's re-engagement center to consult with youth who have dropped out of high school and seek re-entry, as well as those who are currently enrolled but are severely overage and undercredited. Similarly, we have staff whose work is dedicated to early childhood and early intervention issues. DHS has also made significant progress in reducing the number and percentage of children placed in congregate care settings. DHS firmly believes that children and youth deserve to be with their own families, and when that's not possible, we strive to find other permanent family settings for children. Our goal is to only use congregate care when absolutely necessary, and primarily for treatment purposes. Since fiscal year '08, the percentage of youth in congregate care, that's both group home and institution settings, has decreased from approximately 22.5% to approximately 14.5%. As we continue with our IOC system transformation, DHS is also working to strengthen and expand our hotline and investigation divisions. We're currently experiencing a rise in the number of calls to the hotline and a rise in the number of investigations. Specifically, hotline reports are up 41% when comparing the first quarter of calendar year 2014 to the first quarter of calendar year 2015. The total number of investigations for this same time period is also up 32%. We believe that this increase in volume is primarily due to a sweeping overhaul of child welfare laws after the Jerry Sandusky case, which ultimately resulted in 27 new laws. Some of the major changes expanded the definition of child abuse, expanded who can be labeled a perpetrator, increased the number of mandated reporters, and increased the penalties for mandated reporters who fail to report abuse. Additionally, these laws mandated new electronic reporting and data collection requirements. In addition, and possibly somewhat related to, the growth in our hotline and investigation divisions, we are experiencing a steady rise in the number of children in placement. At the time of budget testimony last year, we had approximately 4,500 children in care. We now have approximately 5,300 children in placement. Similarly, we have seen a rise in the number of families receiving in-home services. As of March 2015, approximately 4,200 children were receiving in-home services. Finally, in closing, I would like to stress that we are committed to completing the full implementation of IOC. We are working collaboratively with our staff and the provider community to ensure that quality child-focused and family-centered services are delivered to the children and families of Philadelphia. Thank you very much for your consideration. Our staff and I are available to answer any questions that you may have about my testimony.
Thank you once again. It is always, believe it or not, good to see you. Sometimes we go at it a little bit, but in both cases, it is my sincere belief it's for the benefit of the kids.
Absolutely.
So therefore, that respect will always be maintained, and it is good to see.
Absolutely.
A couple of quick questions that I would have is, on your testimony, you mentioned reunifications, you mentioned those in out-of-care services and those who are in foster care. What was those numbers again? I know 4,200 were in-home, I believe.
So 4,200 children were receiving in-home services.
Right.
And we have approximately 5,300 children in placement, or out-of-home care.
Okay, that's what I needed to do. So you also talked about your expanded role, I believe it was, in the school system.
Yes.
Can you describe that? You said 10 schools, and I would be interested, we asked this of, I think it might have been behavioral health, earlier today. How were those schools chosen, and what were the services provided?
Okay. So DHS has been expanding its education, DHS has been expanding its Education Support Center. We actually have a center that that staff, that is what they're dedicated to do. They work very collaboratively with the school. In fact, I'm happy to say that in, hopefully on May 20, that we will actually be co-locating the bulk of that staff in the 440 North Broad Building, so that they're actually there and they can work even closer together. And so the 10 staff specifically that you've referenced are, each one is assigned to a school, one school that is in each of the COUAs areas. You know, our COUAs are geographically determined across the city. We have a total of 10. And so there was one school selected, and I'll give you some examples of those schools. However, that staff is still available to be a resource for other schools in the catchment area of where the Community Umbrella Agency is. So for example, for, in the District of COUA 1 net, Edison High School was the school that was selected. COUA 2 is at Kensington Kappa High School. COUA 3 is Lincoln High School. COUA 4 is Northeast High School. COUA 5 is Wagner Middle School. COUA 6 is Martin Luther King High School. COUA 7 is Robert Morris Elementary. COUA 8 is South Philadelphia High School. COUA 9 is Tilden Middle School. And COUA 10 is Overbrook High School. And so there were a number of decisions that were made, many of them at the table with the school district, to make a determination as to where we felt the presence was most needed. We were trying, in our rudimentary way, to try and sort of support the school district, knowing that they have fewer counselors in these schools. So some of the decisions was about where the need looked like, based on the number of students and number of counselors, and also sort of what we see where we get a lot of our cases from.
So I'm very pleased that you made those decisions, particularly the one dealing with my alma mater, not to be selfish about Overbrook, but I'm glad you're there. But to me, we do a monitoring system. Every 7:00 AM, we have what is called a Safe Avenues Meeting, and it's a roll call with all of the principals. And some of the things that we hear by way of what is causing some of the students' inability to actually grasp lessons, is said that two bookbags that they bring to school. One is full of the lessons of the day, the other is full of the troubles from home the night before. So we're glad that you're taking this approach. What are the things you're discovering? It might be too early to say, but what are the things you're discovering by way of need for services in those particular schools?
So I don't know if it's too early to say, or that it's particular to those schools, but in general, I think what you say is very true. Many of our children do come to school with a lot of other things that they have to deal with, based on the situation in the home. So just trying to address them, trying to help school personnel know how to navigate what is sometimes a complicated system of the social service world, and where the right place is to get help. We're also doing some new things with our truancy, and we are collaborating now. We have sort of totally revamped the way that we're doing truancy. Issued a truancy RFP and just awarded 10 different providers, each one attached to the Community Umbrella, not attached, but in that Community Umbrella Agency area, so that they can get to know those people there. And we're doing the new truancy approach is a very different model than what we used to do, because it is more of a prevention model, which is, we have a three-tiered approach, tiers 1, 2, and 3, trying to get involved with children before they become chronically truant. So the first tier starts with kids who have missed five to nine days of school, for example, or unexcused absences, so that...
Excuse me a second.
Okay.
We have a slight change. I'll be over there.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sorry, you have to start from the beginning? Just kidding, just kidding, just kidding. Sorry, thank you. Sorry.
You settle. I can finish? Okay. So again, I was talking about what we were doing with truancy. So now we're doing it in a prevention-based approach. It's a tiered program where we try to get involved with the kids before they become chronically truant, and hopefully can make a better difference by starting earlier. And the level of the intervention, or intensity of the intervention, is different depending on which tier you're on, tier 1, tier 2, tier 3. We're also doing it in a collaborative process with the Family Court, as well as the School District of Philadelphia. So when we issued the RFP this time, when the selection committee was representatives from the school district, as well as the court, so that we could make sure that all of those needs were being covered. And so there are 10 different providers who were selected and will be working within that Community Umbrella Agency area. And the benefit of that is it helps build those relationships and sort of linkages, again, between the Community Umbrella Agencies and the community, and the schools in their area, as well as with the truancy providers who are in those areas and can offer services to them as well.
So if you note the chart, and now the President can represent it, that school-based Family Service Center he's taken a real strong advocacy for. So it's good to hear that you, Behavioral Health, all of you guys are in there. One of my schools, which won't be named, one of the teachers took it upon themselves to bring in 10 pairs of shoes of different sizes for the kids that would come to school, and some of them, in the rain, have holes so bad that their feet were soaked. And so they just started giving them away. How do you learn, when you have to navigate your way to school on keeping your feet dry is just beyond me. And what I will do is I'll yield this portion to allow some of my colleagues to speak, and I'll get the questions on the next round.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman, not here. Okay, Councilwoman Task.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a couple of questions here. How are the COUAs doing in Philadelphia? Are they moving along as planned, or hope to evolve into what the master plan laid out?
So your question is, how are the COUAs doing? And so I'd like to say that the COUAs are evolving. I think that some progress is being made. We see some progress in several areas, in many areas, and obviously, it is such a new endeavor, and we're in still, really what many would say are the preliminary, are still initial implementation phases. So we're also still realizing some challenges, looking at the model, trying to determine where it may need to be tweaked, ultimately trying to ensure that we make sure that the safety and well-being of our children are met. But we are beginning to, I believe it is, beginning to take a foothold in the communities. People are beginning to recognize the Community Umbrella Agencies, remember many of the other changes that we talked about, some of which, for example, is the collaboration with the school district and the schools in these areas. And the COUAs have become very familiar with all of the schools in those areas, and we wanted the principals to be able to meet them. So in conjunction with the school district, we've held some town hall meetings, kind of, where everybody could meet each other, and we could talk about, you know, where we have services that could be helpful. There are a number of other things that we do in the community. We are beginning to measure and see that more kids are being able to be maintained in their own community than they were before. We, the family team conferencing model is a large part of Improving Outcomes and the Community Umbrella Agency system. And so we're beginning to see a much stronger participation level of families in the process, and families having more voice in the process. We are happy that our numbers in congregate care, which is kids who are in group home or institutions, are continuing to decrease, because we do believe that every child deserves a home, and we're trying to move forward with that. There is, I think, the transfer of learning from DHS and DHS staff, and DHS technical staff to the Community Umbrella Agencies is continuing to increase and progress. And also, in the community, we're doing a number of things that are kind of strength-based, such as parenting cafes. Many of the Community Umbrella Agencies are involved with other grassroots agencies and stuff in the community. That is beginning to develop. Most of the family team conferences we do are in the community. We hold them in churches, rec centers, other community spots or organizations, and that helps build some collaboration and support as well. So some of the, those are some of the positive things that we've seen since we instituted the COUAs. It is still really very, very early, though, in the process. Half of the Community Umbrella Agencies just, really, we call it standing, or opened up and started taking cases in fiscal year 2015. So five of them just really started getting their cases in fiscal year 2015. So it's really preliminary in terms of results and outcomes for many of them.
I know that you were not the Commissioner when this whole idea came about, and this may put you on the spot. Do you think if we had engaged the organizations to, in a training session, to understand what they were going to take on, whether to be a COUa, might have helped with a more in-depth kind of engagement, and where, once they opened as a COUa, may have had less problems?
I think hindsight is 2020, and I think certainly maybe we attempted, or thought we attempted. It was a very careful and thought-out planned process, because the planning went on for about three or four years, even before I came to DHS, you know, in terms of the implementation process. But I do think that, I'm not sure that the full understanding was there as to the real level of the work, and the volume of the work, and the intensity of the work, you know, in the beginning. And again, you know, maybe that is something that we could have done differently, and certainly have tried to address as we go along and sort of pick up those challenges. I do think that those COUAs who opened later, though, the ones who opened in 2015, sort of had the benefit of that, that the other earlier COUAs kind of helped us work through the growing pains and the phases, and so they were able to learn and be able to see some things that the earliest COUAs that opened had already gone through, and maybe benefited from that knowledge from the other COUAs. I do think the Community Umbrella Agencies do a good job of interacting with each other and trying to learn from each other, and, you know, share what works, what doesn't work, sort of strengths and weaknesses with each other as well.
Am I done? I can go on? Okay. What is the estimated date for the completion of the IOC transition? Who will provide services to the cases on the back end?
So the estimated date right now, loosely for completion, is the end of 2015, the end of calendar year 2015. And at that point, who would be providing services on the back end would be the Community Umbrella Agencies. We currently have approximately 3,600 cases already over. After Community Umbrella Agencies, there's probably about another 2,000 still left at DHS, but we very carefully have to look at each case, and then each child within each case, to make sure that the transition is the right and timely, and, you know, no disruption, or as minimal amount of disruption for the child and the family. So that's the estimated goal right now, is the end of calendar year 2015, for all of the cases in the back end to have been moved to the Community Umbrella Agencies.
If the COUa process is doing well, then why are you holding up transfers of staff from case-carrying units to non-case-carrying units?
So it's sort of complicated right now, because as we're moving staff into non-case-carrying units, primary for me always has to be the safety of the children and families. And we have been experiencing a real increase or rise in the number of kids that are coming to our system. Our system is much larger now than it had been before. I think I testified earlier that last year this time, we had about 4,500 kids in care. Right now, we have about 5,300 kids in care. My hotline reports are up tremendously. Number of calls and number of investigations are up, and I'll give you some numbers, tremendously. When I compare the beginning of calendar year 2014, January, to March of 2014, with the beginning of this calendar year, January to March of 2015, I have a 41% increase in hotline calls. So that's 2,000 more calls into my hotline, and a 32% increase in investigations. So that's 1,200 more investigations.
What are you seeing as the cause for the increase?
I believe, and part of the reason that I'm using that calendar year, is because the new laws that were as a result of the Jerry Sandusky case, there was a sweeping overhaul of child welfare laws. There were about 27 new laws. The majority of them went into effect January 1. And so that's why we're looking at that portion of the calendar year, the difference that is made, and it had some real differences, because it did major changes to the definition of abuse, major changes to the definition of who was a perpetrator, expanded the number of mandated reporters, increased the penalties if you don't report. So for example, we're seeing many more calls from our professional reporters as a result, and just in general. And so it's not just Philadelphia. When I talk to my counterparts across the state, people are experiencing huge increases in both the hotline calls and the investigations. So some of the reason I've not been allowed, able to allow DHS staff to transition is I have to make sure that we have enough staff to be able to cover those investigations and that initial work, particularly on our front end, and the front end needs expanding right now. So we have had to hold the transfer of some staff, or stagger the transfer of some staff, until we can try and get a better handle on this volume increase that we're still experiencing, and hopefully it'll start to stabilize.
So could I conclude that the, as a result of the Sandusky case, the hotline calls are related to child abuse, around sexual child abuse?
It's not just sexual child abuse, though. The Sandusky case was about sex abuse. So yes, we've seen some increases, obviously, in that area as well. But in general, calls to the hotline about abuse and neglect situations in general, we're seeing an increase. I think some of it is when you have a lot of attention and advertising about child abuse awareness, sometimes people realize some things that they saw that they should have called in about and didn't. They are calling in. I think another thing that changed was the structure in how school district personnel call in. Before, many schools had a tiered approach where if a teacher saw something, she had to go through her counselor or through the principal, and then they made a determination and then call. Now it mandates that the teachers, you know, call straight through. So a lot of it is about the changes that came about in the law and the changes. The other thing is, a lot of cases that we would have screened out before, because they didn't meet the legal definition of abuse, are now screened in. You can't screen them out, because they've expanded those definitions.
And one other question, this is somebody else asking a question. The children who are moved from a home, what happens in the home? What services are provided to the adults, or the perpetrator, or a situation in the home where the mother just may be afraid and get the kid, or something like that? What kind of services do you provide to the person left behind at the home?
So first of all, we only try to move a kid out of a home when it is absolutely necessary. Removal from the home is the last resort. We try to provide in-home services, try to work with stabilizing the family, but if our workers go in, do an investigation, identify safety threats, and we feel that those threats cannot be mitigated within home services, or that is the only way the child will be safe, we're forced to remove. But absolutely, we work with the family, and are required to by law. We have to offer services to the family. And so the nature of the services differs, is a very individualized approach, depending on what the need in that family is. For some families, it is drug and alcohol treatment. For some, it might be behavioral health services. For some, it might be parenting classes. For, you know, for others, it may be that they need appropriate housing, or housing things. And so we try to work with them in all those different areas, and a plan is developed for the family that addresses all of the areas that need to be looked at and improved before a child might be able to be returned home.
Now, is all of this done by the COUa that's in charge of the young person, or the person who's taking them from the home? The COUa does that, or what about your department downtown?
So it's actually done, if the case is with the Community Umbrella Agency, then certainly is done by the COUa Case Manager and the other teams that are at the COUa. And we also do it by way of our family team conferencing. With our family team conference, and we actually have a DHS social worker who is the team coordinator, and they are responsible for engaging that perpetrator, engaging that parent, to bring them to the table so that we can hear their voice in terms of what services they need in order to address the needs of their family. And we also have a DHS practice specialist, which is a master's-prepared DHS social worker who facilitates the conference. During the conference, we actually outline the goals and objectives of the family. So the DHS social worker will facilitate it, but the COUa Case Manager actually carries out the objectives, and carry out and put in the interventions that's necessary to for turning that particular child home.
One other question, I think I'll be done. How many employees are waiting for lateral transfers and opportunities to transfer to other city departments? And what is the delay, and when will they be able to transfer? And what happens to cases on the back end when staffs are transferred to the COUAs? Did you answer it a little bit?
So I don't have the number with me, can get back to you with that, of the number of employees who are waiting for lateral transfers to other departments. There has been a hold on lateral transfers, to be honest with you, for quite some time, just because of the condition that the department is in. And we have that immediate need to have case-carrying social work staff in the department to make sure that we meet all of the public safety needs of the children and families in Philadelphia. And right now, we just have so many investigations and calls coming in that we don't have the ability or the liberty to let the lateral transfers go through. I would hope that as soon as we can get stabilized to a point that we feel that we can handle adequately what we have, then we might be able to lift that moratorium on letting lateral staff transfer to other departments. I don't have the exact number, though, but I can try to get that for you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, I'm gonna emphasize the fact that I could not do your job, and emphasize the fact that, thank God, you do your job. And we thank the fact that kids in the city of Philadelphia have some measure of protection from family abuse, external abuse, and so I'm grateful for what you do. All of us, from time to time, have to take a look and a mirror and see if we can... All of us, from time to time, have to take a look at America and see if we can do it better and how are we doing. So, one, Councilwoman Tasko's point, if you were to take a snapshot of last year, having the COA systems all in place, at least the ones that have been around for a year, and overlap a map of those same areas the year before, what things are changed? What type of, are we making progress and quantify what that progress is?
So, I do think we're making some progress in some of the areas. Many of them are, the things are outlined in response to Councilwoman Tasko's question. And that is, we are definitely making progress with a community presence, which was something that we did not have at all. DHS had no presence in the community. And the inception of IOC went back to the Child Welfare Advisory Board after that Danielle Kelly case. And one of the recommendations, several of the recommendations that they made was that we did not have a community presence and we had not developed any type of a relationship with the community. So that is definitely in a much better place than it ever was. I think the development of that we did not do a good job of getting families' voice in the process or even making sure that families always truthfully understood the process in terms of what was happening to them when they got involved with the child welfare system. So the family team conferencing model is making a huge difference in terms of bringing families to the table, allowing them to understand kind of what's going on, to give them some voice in the planning and in the process. And also, at that table, is a multidisciplinary approach because depending on the need of that individual family, if there are some issues, for example, in the education area, then somebody from our Education Support Center staff might be there. And if we need to, we would have somebody from the school district there. If it is a medical problem, one of our DHS nurses or the DHS medical director would be present. If it's behavioral health, behavioral health might be at the table. So it allows the planning and approach to be done in a much more sort of team and multidisciplinary fashion than we were doing prior to IOC.
So, what would be helpful to me, and not in this hearing, but to provide an apples-to-apples comparison of the years before COAs and the years after. And you can measure, like, for example, I'll ask this question here. What were the number of child fatalities last year? And how did that compare to the year before?
I can get that for you.
And I would ask that you say the ones in foster care versus the ones that you just come upon based on a complaint or some unportionate circumstances.
So, the number of fatalities, you're asking me as of last year?
So, if you go from this time last year, fiscal year, we're in fiscal year 15, fiscal year 15, fiscal year 14.
So, let me go back a little bit. In 2013, there were 11 child fatalities. In 2014, there were five.
So, is that, that's generally in the city as opposed to in childcare and foster care? Is that in general or both?
So, I believe that that is in total.
In total.
In total. Those are, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Those are, if I'm looking at which fatalities were reported to the department, that over time, that it was determined that the reason for the fatality was the result of abuse.
Okay.
That's what that is. So that's not, total, it was 50, whereas the total number of deaths that were reported to the hotline in 2014.
So, when you say reported, somebody called in and said, finish the sentence.
Ordinarily, if I say reported, the call primarily comes from either the law enforcement, police, sometimes the medical examiner's office, sometimes a hospital.
So, there were 50 deaths?
So, in 2014, there were 50 total deaths, whereas in 2013, there were 61 total deaths. So the number of total deaths has started to decrease some.
Okay.
And then, the stat that I gave you a little bit earlier was out of them, how many of those, once the investigation took place, was it determined that the death was a result of abuse? So in 2013, 11 of them, it was determined that the death was a result of abuse, or what we call an indicated or, you know, finding the investigation. And in 2014, it was only five.
So, in the case of Sebastian, the life of Sebastian, the article written by The Inquirer, can you talk about what went wrong there?
I don't know, to be honest with you, that I remember everything that was in that article.
Oxycontin. And what was disturbing was that there were five reports before that, to that household, that there was a problem there. And then, you know, we find him dead. So, and I don't know if that was a COA or a direct supervision, but...
So, that was not a community umbrella case. That was direct DHS involvement. Little bit difficult for me to talk about that case, though, without, you know, having really reviewed the case file or anything. But the COA was not involved in that case. It had nothing to do with IOC. And so some of it would be, I would have to go back and look at what the reports were, what the nature of the reports were, what the investigation was at the time that those investigations took place and kind of what they found and what the disposition of them was. I don't know, you know, off the top of my head whether or not they were founded, unfounded, or what services we put in or did not put in as a result of them.
So, based on the article, there were five calls, they were founded, unfounded. So, that's one. And then there's the Rigsburg case where there were a number of calls and I think, what was that fatality? He was held hostage, that's the one where he was allegedly held hostage and then escaped and wound up killing his mother and father. I say that, and what they have in common is that there were calls made before. That is the part where if somebody cries out for help, so if, maybe we can't do them now, but we need to figure out what we can do better.
Absolutely.
To make sure that if there are five calls, you know, and they're found, unfounded, we need to change the criteria.
So, I can tell you that some of the things we're looking at, sort of from a, because I understand what you're saying now in terms of a theme, is it is important, the prior history. We certainly took some lesson learned from those particular cases as well as other cases. We have a robust Act 33 team, which is the legislation that requires every death to be looked at, and there's a multidisciplinary team. Ours is chaired by the medical examiner. On that team is the first deputy district attorney at McCann, as well as the police special victims unit, representatives from CHOP, St. Christopher's, behavioral health, the state, all of the entities that would be, need to be involved. And so they do a very careful job of looking through the evidence and making recommendations. We track those recommendations over time to make sure that they're not hollow and are actually implemented. We've certainly talked about the very area that you're talking about, the need to do additional stuff. We are doing some additional stuff at DHS in terms of trying to, and it's a little difficult to try and quantify what is the right number, but trying to put some flags in place in terms of when you've seen X number of reports come in on a family within X amount of time, do you take a look at it differently and like put some red flags in the computer system, some other things? Certainly, though, the prior history is really important and trying to make sure that we get that across the staff, the importance of reviewing that prior history because it kind of might tell you a story in terms of what was going on. And so some of it also depends on how long ago the reports were. I do think we do a lot of things much better than we were doing many years ago when some of these reports were called in. And certainly that our investigation staff is pretty experienced and sophisticated in some of these we handle very differently. For example, one of the changes we made in recent years were our fatalities and near fatalities, when they come in, are investigated by, we call it MDT, a multidisciplinary team unit, but it tends to be your very experienced investigators who handle these cases in a different way. We didn't always do it that way. We also changed some other things that was in existence in our intake. For example, it used to be if a case came in and then within 60 days, another report came in on the same family and went back to the same worker to do the investigation. Well, I took that requirement away because sometimes a fresh set of eyes may get you a different, you know, set of circumstances. So we're trying to look at all of those components that would help to make sure that we try and weed in that prior history piece.
So, I don't want you chasing frivolous cases because sometimes one motivation or another, a neighbor calls on somebody that they don't like, an ex-spouse calls on somebody so that they don't get custody. I don't want you chasing, you know, windmills and things like that. But when five calls come in, red light, yellow light, green light kind of system that says that maybe there's, if there's smoke, they ask to be fired. And we need to figure out what that is because, you know, no, you're not going to play perfect percentages there, but we have to, we have to up the percentages. And there needs to be a tipping point that, wow, after the third call, we need to send in that multidisciplinary team to take a real forensic look. I'm going to hold the rest of my questions.
You were the only round until just now. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Want to first say, I know that transitioning in with all of these COAs has been quite difficult and quite challenging, and I'm glad that as a result of the hearings and other stuff, there's more increased communication. So part of what the challenge was, was COAs doing all the services, the prevention services. If you had to articulate what your, this budget calls for moving forward around prevention and groups like the stakeholders groups that you funded, how would you articulate what DHS's prevention strategy for the New Year is going to be?
So, we have not moved, the bulk of the prevention stuff at DHS is still remaining with DHS. We have not moved it to the COA, and I don't foresee that we're going to move it within this fiscal year FY '16. I think the bulk of the prevention will probably stay at DHS. So, all of the truancy contracts are still, and that comes under the prevention arm, maintained at DHS. What we call family empowerment services, which is another in-home service that is provided in those cases where there is not been an identified safety threat, but family might be right on the cusp or you see they need help, those will remain at DHS. Our parenting programs for right now are still at DHS. So the bulk of the prevention, if I was looking at the prevention landscape, will remain at DHS and remain with the other providers who have been providing those services.
And what is going to be the decision moving forward around the stakeholders groups?
Now, I'm not sure I understand your question about the stakeholders.
The community stakeholders groups that we have. I have Kensington stakeholders, Honey Park stakeholder groups that are funded through DHS. What is the thinking moving forward? Because at one point, it was a discussion that the COAs were going to manage it and then they weren't going to manage it. So where are we in that?
So, I'm hoping I understand your question right, Councilwoman. If we're talking about, for example, the SCOP, we do a number of, what we call them SCOP, which are basically contracts with smaller providers in the communities, that tend to be community groups, those are staying at DHS. I'm not sure if you might be talking about the EPIC stakeholder groups, which were community-based, those will most likely be phased out if they have not already been phased out eventually. We have been, those are going to be taken over by the community umbrella agencies, some of which have already taken place. Some of the community umbrella agencies have worked very well with the groups in their, the EPIC groups in their COA catchment area, some better than others. Some have hired some of the EPIC staff to be part of their community engagement staff. But the COAs are required to do community engagement, and they are all required to have a community advisory board and to have a member of that community advisory board that serves on the board of the community umbrella agency.
So, it's going to be up to the COA to determine whether they want to continue the contract with the agency that's providing the services or they want to bring it in-house? Again, I'm just doing the issue of folks wanting to bring everything in-house.
Right. It is not up to the COA. Pretty much, the decision was made at DHS that the EPIC groups will be phased out over time because it is part of what the COA is required to do and part of the IOC plan or the COA model, if you will, that they do community engagement. So it would have been a duplicity of services to continue to have the EPIC group in some fashion do that under a paid contract. But we have been trying to make sure that we try and work together because you don't want to lose the traction that those groups were able to develop in the communities. And so for some of the COAs, they have been working sort of closely with those groups, and it has been transitioning pretty well. We are trying to the extent that we can help facilitate those transitions as well.
Okay. So, three months, six months from now, if the same type of community outreach is not happening, who's going to be monitoring that?
So, we monitor community engagement. There is a community engagement group. We have a IOC steering committee that is sort of the stakeholders from around the city in various areas that are part of that. One of the subgroups under the IOC steering committee is community engagement. So they would definitely be looking at it and trying to develop where it's working, where it's not, what's better plans, how do we do it? But in addition, it is something that we're very cognizant of at DHS, and certainly, we will also be monitoring where it's taking place and where it's not taking place.
In some communities, you know, I'll take, for instance, my Frankfurt community is very diverse. It's really been hard to build up the level of confidence to bring certain people around the table. I want to make sure we don't lose that kind of in this transition because there are a lot of partners, a lot of grassroots partners at the table, and we want to make sure that they stay engaged at that level. So I want to be able to come back two and three months and say, what's the plan? So I should be able to go to my COA folks and say, what's your community outreach engagement plan?
Yes. And one of the things I'm also doing, my communications director, is working with the sort of community engagement people. And we're actually working on developing or revising, because there were plans already, but also revising and maybe developing some new community engagement plans and structures. I have to take a little more robust look at it myself, to be honest with you. Sort of was focusing on some other things as I came in, but I will be beginning to go to some of the community advisory board meetings so that I can meet the board, so that I can see them, see what's going on. And we're also, and Kim is my implementation officer, who takes a real interest in that kind of stuff. She also does, and attends, as well as my deputies and some other, some community meetings and other stuff where we can try and help bridge that gap and to try and make sure that it's actually taking place.
Okay. There's a group, and I had asked about the group before, but we're getting ready to do a major renovation and it will impact. You have Little Red Boxing Gym at $50,000 at Rivera Recreation Center. They're never there. I don't know what their schedule is. I don't know who they report to. I don't know who participates. We're going to do a major renovation of that facility, so I'd like to see whatever they're supposed to do for that $50,000 and who they're supposed to serve.
Absolutely.
Because we may need to move them around as we renovate that facility, but they're never there, so I don't...
And I will take a look at that, too. I need to take a look at the prevention contract myself to see exactly what the contract entails, and we'll definitely get back to you. All I know is that it is a boxing...
It is a boxing gym. It's just, we've been going there a lot because we're getting ready to gut the place out.
Understood.
They're never there, so I want to make sure. So, one of the things that Council President's been talking about is this kind of co-locating, similar to what we did with the SUV unit. How are we doing around trying to get local placements for, you know, programs like The Bridge? How are we doing in terms of planning so that we're not sending kids when we have to place them so far away from their homes?
So, we are definitely continuing to plan in that area, and that's one of the outcomes that we are measuring for, improving outcomes, to make sure that we're, we try to keep kids as close to home as possible because we know that that's the best for them as well as their families, and it helps to facilitate reunification in terms of proximity for visits and other things. So we continue to monitor that. We do regularly monitor how many kids are placed out of their homes and how far from their homes in terms of how many miles is a kid placed from their home. And I believe for those kids who are not in a kin placement, meaning with family, about 52% of them are placed within five miles of the home that they originally came from. So we're beginning to monitor that, and that is one of the progresses of IOC that we have seen. We allow kin homes to, we waive that requirement because we know that it's more important to put a kid with a family member than in the proximity of the community. So even if the family member lives farther, we'll still let them reside with the family.
Have we talked to any of our partners potentially? I have two or three closed school facilities in the district. Have we begun to talk to some providers to see if we can build some more slots within the city grounds?
Well, we're always having conversations with providers. I think some of it is about what is the service need that we need and what is the continuum of services. So really trying to look at the array of services that we have in terms of where the need is. Truthfully, our service need for some of those kinds of slots that you were referring to would be considered more group home or institution. We're actually shrinking the system in that way because we're trying to get more kids in family-like settings. So we're trying to have more kids in foster care or in kinship care if they cannot remain in a home because we believe that they do better and it's certainly better for them overall to be with a family. So I don't know that we've actually started full-fledged negotiations with some. I have talked to some, and there are some facilities who are close by who have expanded a little bit that are like either within the city arena or whatever, but we're really trying to shrink.
Yeah, there's a group, I was dealing with a young woman who unfortunately had been raped at home, and she was fostered out, so she was... had been raped at home. And she was fostered out, so she was 19 years old. And, you know, Covenant House does such a great work job on, on Kessington Avenue in terms of providing kind of studio, very affordable housing. Are we looking to do any more of that? I just found that there's a group of kids who are like not home. And are, they're, they're technically homeless, because they end up living with different people. I'm just wondering if, if there's a model, as we talk about housing moving forward, if there's a model, as, as much as I hate these 450 square foot apartments, I just feel like that's a request we get all the time, that we're unable to meet.
So we are very conscious of the need for housing. It's a huge need for our families in terms of parents often. But in particular, that population of kids that you're talking about, I always say the 18 to 21-year-olds for us, that definitely need housing. We do have a number of housing programs that we are working on and trying to enhance. And we actually started, which was a model one, I don't believe there are any others in the country, a program with PHA, where they gave us, we call them quads, where they're like four apartments in, in, in one building. And they gave us, three of our kids reside in all of them. And in the fourth quad, they put a disabled person and kind of pay, like develop a job that our kid helps to do some things in the common areas or for that person. That model has worked well. We actually have some meetings coming up to talk about expansion of that model with PHA. And we're also looking at some other things with PHA around some scattered sites. And it goes to that particular population that you're referring to, that 18 to 21-year-olds. So yes, we are trying to expand that.
It would be important, and I'll mention this to you, I have about 200 folks who are overhoused, what PHA considers overhoused. They're in big homes that, you know, at one point, you know, there, there were more people living in the house. And PHA has to, over the next couple of years, transition those folks out. For me, the thought of having someone who's lived in a house for 47 years and remove that senior from that house, that model that you talked about might be one where we can keep some of those seniors, particularly scattered sites. In my case, I have a lot of Latinos who are in scattered sites, well, not a lot, because PHA's number's like 2%. But that they, in those situations, I like to entertain that kind of kin, kinmanship relationship, where maybe that's a place where we can put some of these fostered-out, overage kids with a senior in a home to keep that senior in there.
Right, right.
So just to introduce that to you, because that's something that I'm very concerned about, because neighborhoods that I, where I live, in North Square where I live, I have 40, 50 people that are going to be impacted in this, what they are calling overhoused situation.
Yes, understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
He said Jones? I thought he said Johnson. All right. Thank you, sir. Couple of quick questions. Number one, on special ed programs in the school that you're administering, and you're trying to come up with a truancy plan, are you taking into account school refusal versus school truancy? Because that is a subtle difference by way of some young people who feel bullied or intimidated because of their special needs, just aren't going to school. And, you know, that kind of counts against their attendance record. Are, are you making a delineation between those two different things?
I don't know about delineation in terms of the numbers, but very cognizant of the issues that, there's a myriad of issues why kids will say that they're not going to school. Often, safety or bullying is one of them. That's why we were trying to work and redesign the model, so that we work so closely with the school district, so that their staff is at the table, because the climate in the school would be something that they controlled as opposed to us. But our truancy providers are very aware of that. And we'll try to assist the family. We're working through those issues and trying to determine how we can find out what's best for that particular child. And then our education support center is there at the table to help make sure that we have the child in the best school. Or if for some reason it needs to be navigated, that the child is moved or something, that they help navigate through the school district, sort of red tape, so to speak, to make sure that we get them where they are. So they are working on those kind of, what are the underlying issues that are contributing to the truancy?
So in a case where a kid, a child or a parent identifies the fact that their child doesn't feel comfortable, and they feel intimidated and/or bullied, do you make an adjustment with, do you work with the school district to move them?
Well, we would work with the school district to see what goes on. Now, in terms of whether or not it's truancy, if the child is not going to school, they're still counted as not going to school. And if they're unexcused absences, it might still be counted that way. But we would be willing, yes, to work with the family and to assist them with working with the school district to try and come up with a resolution to that problem.
That was brought to my attention by a parent. So I just wanted to put that in your hands. Last year, so we, we've asked this question before, and it's an uncomfortable question for me, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. How many children have registered abuse cases while in custody of foster parents last year?
I will try to find that answer for you.
And, and has it gone down from following, from previous year?
Thank you. Okay. In fiscal year 14, 13 children were abused while in DHS care. And that's approximately about 3.6% of all the reports that we get of kids in care. And it actually has gone down, because in FY13, 14 kids was abused. And that was 4.5% of all reports. And the reason that the percentage is lower is we got more kids in care. So even though we had more kids in care, it went down a little bit in terms of the number of kids who were abused while in care.
So in those cases, what have, are the, what has been the disposition of those cases? Meaning, what, was it founded, unfounded, prosecuted, not prosecuted? What, what was the disposition?
So the 13 I'm giving you were all cases that are either founded or indicated. Because what happens is, if, if an allegation is made that a kid is being injured while they are in care, then the state does the investigation. And then the state makes the determination as to whether they are going to found or indicate. So those 13 kids were indicated or founded. And I cannot tell you whether or not the perpetrators were, law enforcement proceeded against the perpetrators. That I don't, I don't have with me.
So in a case where there is an allegation, is the foster provider, foster care provider immediately taken out of the system so that, you know, no other child will wind up in that similar circumstance?
So what happens is, the state is actually the one, Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, who licenses foster homes and, and facilities. And so we don't do the licensing. However, if I find out that there's an allegation against a foster parent, we do obviously, and immediately, remove all children who are in their care, that are foster children for us. I don't have the ability to shut a home down, meaning that they can never get kids. But I do have the ability to control which Philadelphia kids go. And what we do is, we flag it in our system so that we don't send any other Philadelphia kids once we get the notice from, from the state.
Share that information with other providers?
Well, once we flag it in our system, there's something like a provider code. And so the home can't get a code, it can't operate, if it does not have a code in it.
So what, what I, maybe I didn't say it right. So I understand you cease and desist placing kids there. Do you share that with other agencies that may have different sources of young people?
I'm not, so we don't, we don't go to other counties, for example.
Right.
And share it. But certainly, if we don't place, one of our providers can't place a kid there if we've already closed a home to that.
So you, there's no reciprocity. So for example, suppose somebody outside of your system uses the same foster care people, and they have an allegation, do they let you know that there might be an open investigation in that facility or site?
So there's a registry, a foster parent registry, that they would go on, that is maintained by the state.
Okay.
That they would put on, and that all of us in whatever county across the state would have access to, that would be able to look at it. There is a registry that is maintained.
Okay. And in cases of alleged abuse are, I think it was an article that talked about allowing them to use pseudo names, because they didn't, a lot of kids feel the stigma, oh, I was abused, I was attacked, or I was bothered. And are, are they given anonymity so that they don't wind up, you know, ostracized or picked on or any of those things?
I don't anything, I, I don't know anything about allowing kids to use pseudo names. However, certainly, whenever an investigation is conducted, the child is talked to privately as part of the investigation. And when we move a child, we would be moving a child. And often, where they're moved to, depending upon what's going on, may not even have any information as to what happened before. I don't know of too many instances where a child has been abused, that it follows them or it becomes, you know, another problem or a pattern for them, because everything is done confidentially, surrounding the investigation into the initial home.
Finally, by way of selection of foster care parents' homes, I know it's difficult to recruit good foster care parents. And how are we doing in that particular area by way of service providing for children?
So it is very difficult to recruit good foster care homes. And we call them resource homes sometimes. We are trying very hard to recruit more resource homes. We are beginning to do some work and trying to do some work within, say, the faith-based community, hoping that maybe we can recruit some homes, because other jurisdictions have had success with recruiting homes out of that, out of the faith-based community or congregations of various types. It is difficult. It is also difficult to make sure that you have the children in the right home, when you put them in the home. And so we're doing okay. But we have a lot more work to do in terms of needing to develop foster care and resources.
I don't know what we can do as a legislative body, a budget appropriating body, but whatever we can do to help you up the level of recruitment and then quality, please let us know, because the outcomes are real clear, that when you get it right, you can save a life. When you get it wrong, you set them on a track of problems throughout their life. We're watching, which leads me to my final, final point. How are we doing with those that age out of the system? And are we improving on those outcomes as opposed to the past?
So kids who age out of the system continue to be a challenge. And making sure that when they age out, they get the services that they need, it happens to be an area that I'm very interested in. And we are trying to do better in a, in a number of ways. I think in some ways, we're doing better. In some ways, we still have a long way to go, quite honestly. We are trying to improve our IL services, which are independent living services, to try and make them be able to be self-sufficient when they leave. We have made a lot of progress with our Achieving Independence Center. And now we're housed at Broadmaster in the old Leon Sullivan Building. And it's sort of the one-stop shop for independent living services for our kids. And it's kind of a model. And they have everything there, from assisting them with tutoring or issues that they maybe have in academically or school, to helping them to fill out college applications, financial aid applications, employment application. They do employment readiness with them. They do mock interviews. We have a little boutique where they can go and get clothes, so they have appropriate clothing for job interviews, things of that nature. But they also teach them basic, what some people would consider basic skills, but might not be as basically taught for our kids, things such as budgeting and planning, and how to balance a checkbook and banking and, and, you know, just other skill-building types of, of things. So we're trying to work on that. Very difficult. Philadelphia, of many of the counties across the state, we actually have a large number of kids who are aged 18 to 21, because we believe in trying to help our kids for as long as we can help them, and help them to transition out. And so we've been doing that for a long time. And we actually try to put as many services in place as we can for our kids that are 18 to 21. I talked a little bit earlier, in response to Councilwoman Sanchez's question, in terms of us having a concern about that population and the housing need also, within that population, or kids who age out. And so the kind of, you know, creative model programs, we're trying to work out with PHA and others, to try and assist them with their housing needs and other needs that they have. And we also do, in response to law, Act 91 came out, which is a reentry program. So what we find is, sometimes you have a young person, they turn 18, and they say, I want out of the system. Because legally, they're an adult, although I might not think they're ready to go out there on their own, like most of our kids are not ready at 18, okay, to go out into the world on their own. Sometimes they want to, and they do. And then they realize they made a mistake. And so years ago, was nothing I could do. If you left at 18, we could not use our money or anything else to bring you back in. But recent law changes allow us now, they can apply for reentry to the system, and we can bring them back in up until age 21, to help them get whatever the services are that they need. So it allows us to be able to help them connect with everything from, you know, they need housing, or their behavioral health services, or whatever else that they need. And also, under the Obama legislation, we've been trying to help them connect and know that they can still get medical benefits up until age 26. And so just getting that word out there and trying to help them navigate the services that are available to them.
So I see you have former Mayor Wilson Good with you. And, you know, you brought your big gun today. And I understand he deals with issues related to families that are incarcerated and provided. Could you talk about that for a moment? And I'm really, really proud that he's still giving of himself to public service in that regard.
So Mayor Good's program, obviously, he would be able to talk about it much better than I. But I do know that it is a program that provides mentoring, sort of a model mentoring program for incarcerated people. Mentoring is something that we're trying to work on and develop more, and we need it for our older youth. And we are in need of mentors. So if you know anybody who's willing, have them contact us. But we are definitely in need of mentors for our teenage kids in particular, older youth. They are developing mentoring programs at our Achieving Independence Center. We're now embarking on what's called sort of a natural mentoring, which means we have our kids sometime identify who they might want to mentor them. Sometimes they've now found a teacher, or coach, or, you know, somebody else who wants to mentor them. One of the things we've done, though, in recent years, is try and increase our outreach to incarcerated parents. Because while they're incarcerated, they still have a right to, to, to see their children, still have a right to participate in the planning for their children in DHS care. And so we now started doing some video conferencing with them. And we now have, you know, some equipment at the department and in a room where they can be involved, sometimes in the team meeting that might be taking place through conference. And we've even done some visitation through that. Also, we've tried to emphasize more and have done much better with our workers in terms of working around taking kids to visit their parents and trying to, we've done, I call it a commercial, I think they call it an infomercial, that runs at the prisons, at the City of Philadelphia prisons, which tells incarcerated people what their rights are, kind of, but also what their obligations are. Because the clock doesn't stop ticking on you, because you're incarcerated, with regards to what you're supposed to do on behalf of your child. So we have that running. And we also have it running in English and in Spanish, which runs throughout on the, in the common areas of the prisons and on the TVs there, that gives them other information. And we've also, in recent years, sort of expanded, working with prison social workers around trying to make sure that certain programs are offered, or that the parents who are incarcerated have access to those programs as well.
Mr. President, I just, it's incredible to me that sometimes we have generational attendance in some of our prison facilities, where a father and a son and a grandfather are all in the same institution. So this is God's work, working to prevent some of those negative outcomes and provide those services. Because, yeah, there's a victim, but there are other victims by the actual perpetrator. Because if he has children, there's, that's a household that doesn't have a father, or a mother, and another parent to be a helping hand, to help with homework and stuff like that. So there are a number of victims, once something happens like that. So thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Yep. Just one last question. We, one of the things that I had asked Dr. Evans, that I, that I'm going to ask for your department is, if you could map out by district, what are your service providers, both on the prevention and then the COA? One of the things we have to get a hold of, and I was in here for the Health Department, is, you know, for people in the community, service is service. And I think it's important for us to get a good visual of what kind of services we have in every single neighborhood. And now that you have the COAs that have given you a foothold in the community, I would like to see what all of those things look like. I've noticed there's, you have a robust list of prevention services and other things. I think that would be beneficial. And if you can forward that with like phone numbers and contacts. Sometimes we get tons of calls from some of these agencies. And I just want to be clear, it's like, what is your role? You know, it's easy for you to give us constituent services. It's sort of like, what, where are you located in all of this? And then how we could be more proactively helpful. So that would be helpful, if you could forward that. And I have a question. You know, we're starting this police oversight. We see what's going on in Baltimore. Clearly, the scenes are graphic, the mother hitting her son. If we were to be in a similar situation, what would be DHS protocols in helping us? I hate to see, and I know you have some really good model programs about first offenders, what could we be doing, or what could DHS be doing to help us? You know, you see these scenes, kids beating up kids on the, on underneath SEPTA. How many of those kids are in your system? And what else could we be doing? And what else could we be doing?
So I don't know exactly how many of the kids you're referring to are in our system. I do have my deputy sitting out here, Tameen Farah for Juvenile Justice, who probably can answer some of these questions a little bit better than I could, and is very committed to trying to come up with diversionary programs and programs that will decrease recidivism for those kids who do come into our system so that hopefully we help them successfully reintegrate back into their communities and they no longer need to come back in. I think we do have the school diversion program that we sort of support with the Police Department, which is, I think, the program that you might have been referring to, where at this point over 400 kids have been diverted that are first-time offenders. And we are excited about that program because there's 400 kids that would have been incarcerated somewhere or in our detention center. And many of them were DHS-involved children on the dependent side. Okay? So it gave them an opportunity to have another chance for sometimes what is seemingly a small infraction, and then you put a kid on that trajectory, and that's the road that they sort of go on. So definitely looking at that. We have a delinquency leadership meeting coming up, which are the stakeholders sort of in the delinquency around the city, the DA's, the police, ourselves, and family court, being housed at family court soon so that we can talk about kind of where we are. Actually, our numbers are going down in terms of a number of arrests in our city for youth have gone down some to the extent that some of our facilities are experiencing shrinking in terms of placing there. But we, there are a number of, we have evening reporting centers. There are a number of other centers that we are trying to use, and that has been going so well. That's a sort of pre-adjudication that we are now trying to.
Yeah, so the reporting centers, again, where are they located? Kind of how do they work?
I want to ask Tameen if she could come up, because she probably can provide these answers a little bit better than I can.
I don't know if that was kind of taking place for our truancy centers that we had, our evening centers, or...
Hi, good afternoon.
The evolutions of the centers.
Okay. So, good afternoon. I'm Tameen Farah. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Juvenile Justice Services. There are two evening reporting centers, one of which is run by Northeast Treatment Centers located at about Second and Berks, and the other is run by Philadelphia Youth Advocacy Programs. That-
That's a perfect example. I live around the corner. I talked to any of you. I didn't know that that was considered one of their drop-off centers. That's around the corner from my house.
Okay.
And I didn't know that.
Well, so the evening reporting centers are actually alternatives to secure confinement. They're not for your run-of-the-mill young person. It really is a diversion, an opportunity for a young person to experience being at home with his or her own family instead of being locked in a secure facility. Both of those programs-
So who takes the kid there? An incident happens?
So it's at judicial discretion. So the judges make the decisions as to which young people will get that as an opportunity and which won't. So judges make those decisions based on a number of risk factors. They're using now the Detention Risk Assessment Instrument and provided a young person scores within the range that suggests that he or she can be safely managed in the community without creating new victims, then a child is referred.
Thank you. And one last thing. One of the things that came out at the last hearing was the issue of when COO members and folks have to go to court. And we heard some complaints from our advocates in the court system. Has that process gotten better in terms of training staff to be able to go in front of the court and be prepared in our hearings last time? That was one of the items that came up. Have we improved that?
And I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I think I missed the beginning of your question. You're asking me about COO performance in court?
Yeah. She mentioned the courts in terms of court-ordered stuff. One of the complaints or the criticisms we got was that some staff was unprepared to go into court with some of the children. And so she's saying about a referral. Have we strengthened that? What have we done since the last hearing around the communication piece?
So what we've done since the last hearing around that is a number of things to try and help to improve the quality of preparation and the quality of performance before the courts with the Community Umbrella Agency staff. One of the things that we have done since the last hearing is we have developed a Department of Technical Assistance, which comes under my DHS University, which is typically our training arm that provides coaching and other things for the COO and COO staff. And they have started doing what we call DRO, which means disposition of review order. In other words, court order clinics, which means that COO staff can come, bring a court order that they have. They can help explain that court order, help them understand if there's some language on there or other things that they don't know how to navigate it or kind of what the judge wants, what the time requirements are. So we've put that in place. There has been some work done with our Law Department, has been going out to different COUAs, talking to them, trying to develop some things in terms of training and other things. And so we are also developing some booster trainings, if you will, around how to prepare for court. I have personally, along with Kimberly Ali, been going out, meeting with the line-level staff at each of the COUAs. I've been to eight so far. I think I have two more coming up. And one of the things that I found as I'm talking to staff and trying to see is that we do ask the staff to do a lot. And so sometimes it is about how do you prioritize? And I talk to them a little bit about the prioritization of what it is we ask them to do. But also, I talk to them about court preparation and having, you know, practice in family court, you know, kind of what it is the judges are looking for, how you, you know, address that. I do think that court performance is getting better. I have regular meetings with Family Court Administration, and we do talk about some of these things. We are also beginning to track different things in terms of, I have a DHS court representative, we call them, in each courtroom. And so they are also there to try and assist and help bring some closure. We have some of those DHS court representatives who sit in our Law Department and sort of facilitate getting information between the city solicitors and the dependents. And then I've also done some, going to some staff meetings and talking to our lawyers around, you know, how they can be useful in prepping and helping particularly staff who may not be as used to going to court as much.
In addition to the stuff that the department has done to help the COUAs enhance their preparation, presentation at court, we also talked to COO leadership and their administrators, that case management directors on up, will actually go to court every other month so that they can observe the presentation of their staff so that they can also provide constructive feedback to the staff to help enhance their preparation and their presentation at court. So we look at it at a two-pronged process, both the department helping to enhance as well as COO leadership helping to enhance the practice at court as well.
That's so important because that interaction with the courts and whether this child ends up in a situation that, you know, potentially could be permanently damaging to their record versus diverting them because we know the problems. I've had an opportunity to visit a couple of centers, and I'll tell this story because it's really, really telling. At one of the centers, you know, you have a child that gets in trouble in school, and if people don't ask the right questions, this child ends up in a situation within our judicial system when they could have had a death or witnessed, you know, the trauma situation that we've seen. So that is important about what happened, in what context, what was going on in the child's life to make sure that whatever decisions happen in the court are in the best interest of the child, not only short-term but long-term. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank your deputy with whom I met at Youth Study Center. And that's such a special place, and they really, really care about the kids there. So I hope she will, maybe privately, we can talk about a young lady who was there that we were so worried about and so sad that these children, when they're ready to finish school, get transferred since they don't stay there. It's a big issue. In fact, I talked to Kevin Dougherty during, on one of the campaign stops, about that issue of us losing kids who are doing so well in an environment where people care about them. And then about 19 days later, they're sent to the suburbs someplace and they fall down and don't finish school because it's not local. We really have to do something about allowing our children to stay here. But thank you for your efforts and really would like to explore that any way we can.
So thank you for recognizing those efforts. We are blessed that we have a very good education program at the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Services Center, our new name for the Youth Study Center. And it is actually a school district principal who is very dedicated and committed to these young people. And there is a, educational opportunities there are really, really good. So I do definitely understand what you're saying in terms of some of the kids do well there. I'm sure that I, or Tameen, would be happy to talk to you about this young lady. Tameen certainly knows them all much better than I do because she is very into the trajectory for all of these kids. But thank you for recognizing the center and Tameen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Commissioner, thank you so much for your very thoughtful and in-depth testimony and your responses. Most definitely want to have a follow-up with you. First, I'm not sure, have you gotten, have you had a chance to look at this family-based services?
I don't think I have. I think I might be familiar with parts of it, but I haven't seen the document.
Yeah, I'd like to give you a copy and ask for your, just kind of look through it and give us some suggestions.
Absolutely.
As you know, the theme, as we listen to the department's testimony today, it's clear that there are a number, certain level of resources that address these concerns. And in a significant number of cases, you all are already doing this, the approach to, to some degree, kind of consolidating some of these services in a particular location.
Yes.
You know, I think we all understand the proximity of services makes a whole lot of sense. And we've been working with a number of stakeholders. We had a really great presentation. All of the presenters were from outside of the city, so it gave us a different perspective of Baltimore. We talked about the Cincinnati model. So we really would like to be in a position to follow up with you so you can give us some recommendations and suggestions. The universities are involved. They're excited about possibilities and some of the hospitals. So we really look for your very, very critical-
Absolutely.
-solutions to some of this activity that we'd like to embark on. So thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
And we'll follow up.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we will have Office of Supportive Housing.
Housing to come forward, please, so we could keep moving. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
We have your, obviously, we have your, what you sent us already, written testimony. If you could briefly state your position and then we could have some questions.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council.
Maybe pull the microphone just a little closer, a little closer. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
I'm Marie Nahikian. I'm the Director of the Office of Supportive Housing. How might Philadelphia end homelessness? We know how. On April 10th, the Office of Supportive Housing joined in announcing that Philadelphia will end homelessness for our veterans by November 11th, 2015. When that happens, Philadelphia will be the largest city in our nation to accomplish this. How did it happen? And it's a critical lesson for how we might look at homelessness in the city today. There's three critical factors. Leadership. The effort for vets began in 2013 with a commitment from top leaders from our city, from the federal government, and the local community that provides services. Collaboration and partnership. There's an unprecedented system designed by multiple partners with one point of entry for persons who are vets and who are homeless. And finally, resources. The federal government has provided sufficient types of resources that with effective local stewardship ensures that a veteran no longer has to be homeless. So the mission of the Office of Supportive Housing is to help individuals and families do the same thing, moving toward independent living and self-sufficiency and stable housing. OSH fulfills this mission by incorporating leadership, working closely with national and regional leaders, and the many public and private partnerships that support our system. We balance diverse needs, capturing as many resources as possible through multiple subpopulations. For example, we have the federally funded Homeless Continuum of Care, where OSH plans the development of new initiatives and has provided over 5,500 units of permanent supportive housing since the beginning of the continuum. The continuum includes over 50 local nonprofit organizations. OSH manages the Riverview Home, where up to 100 low-income persons in needs of personal care now can reside. In 2014, OSH provided food for 1.6 million meals served in Philadelphia soup kitchens and 4.2 million onsite meals in emergency shelter. We provide support to many city agencies, including LNI, where our trained emergency assistance staff carry out cease and desist orders. OSH provides emergency housing to individuals and families. And since the beginning of FY 2014, 2015, excuse me, OSH has placed 632 persons in permanent housing and 408 persons in transitional housing. These resources largely coming from the Philadelphia Housing Authority. The homeless prevention program has assisted over 600 persons in FY 2015, preventing evictions, mortgage foreclosures, and providing relocation security deposit assistance. I'm pleased to tell you something about the OSH budget request for fiscal year 2016. The proposed FY 16 budget is $91 million. It includes an allocation of $45.2 million in general funds, representing 49%, and 46.5% in grant funds, about 51%. The general fund proposed allocations is a bit higher than FY 15, currently because of employee salary increases as a result of union contracts. The total FY 16 proposed operating budget to OSH is, however, on par with our FY current projections for FY 15. FY 16 challenges include a growing demand for emergency housing. Although Philadelphia is nationally recognized for our homeless programs and our homeless prevention programs, the need for affordable housing, the high levels of poverty and unemployment continue to increase the number of the persons at OSH's front door. A growing number of low-income and poor citizens, many with full-time jobs, 30% of our single men are in shelter, have jobs. They turn to the homeless system for affordable housing. On any given day, OSH is operating at full capacity. On average, about 30 families come daily to our Apple Tree Family Intake Center. The OSH front door is the safety net for these families. Our no vacancy sign leaves families with the reality of not being assisted and the painful job for OSH staff who must say no. OSH continues to assist with prevention strategy and seeking resources from family, friends, or other relatives whenever it's possible and safe to do so when we have to say no. In FY 16, OSH will join the federal goals of ending chronic homelessness in 2016, family homelessness in 2017, and with any good luck, youth homelessness in 2020. Since August 2013 through March 2015, the city and partners, including the Vets Administration, Public Housing Authority, HUD, and nonprofits, have ended homelessness for 905 veterans. OSH wishes, is planning to extend the Philly Vets Team Home Goal for Vets to all Philadelphia residents so that future homelessness will be rare, brief, and non-recurring. We're happy to answer questions. With me is Rodney Cherry, our Fiscal Officer, Joy Presson, my Chief of Staff, as well as our- as our deputies in the various program areas.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for all the work you do. I have just a couple of questions regarding the work you do with domestic violence, domestic violence issue. First, I know there's been money consistently in the budget the last couple of years for the second domestic violence shelter. And I wasn't real clear because I know the money in the budget's kind of in a lump sum. I believe there should be $2.7 million directed towards Women Against Abuse for that second shelter. Is that part? I just wanted to verify that.
2.5 million. And then they got an additional transfer ordinance for another 200,000. So it's a total of 2.7.
So it's 2.7, okay, good, good, okay. And then you talk about in the written testimony about the issue of the citywide coordinated response to domestic violence. Could you just go in a little bit on what exactly OSH does in that effort?
We're a participant, as are many organizations. I think that our staff participating on a regular basis has provided leadership and we will continue to participate.
And I think you, who else is involved in that?
From, you mean in terms of OSH or in terms of the city?
Well, both in this case.
Well, the.
Well, how about with the city? Just with the city, who's involved?
Department of Behavioral Health. I know the Deputy Mayor for Health and Opportunity has been involved. I'm trying to think what other, I know DHS has been involved. So it's been a pretty broad group from the city.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that, thank you.
You know, the largest number of women in our system have been domestically abused.
Yeah.
And we keep a full-time person in our intake center that can screen for domestic abuse. We're getting ready to do special training with all of our workers in shelters and our housing facilities to help them more readily spot issues of domestic abuse, which are sometimes people can't talk about.
Yeah, they won't talk about it, yeah. That's, I know that often, I remember years ago, there was a concern with a bill we did to give people some, victims time off to deal with the issues around domestic violence. And some concern was raised that people would lie about that they were victims of domestic violence. And I said, that's not the problem, that they lie about that. The problem is they don't tell you when they really are victims, so. But again, I appreciate all you do in that effort too. Councilman Jones?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for all of the work and lobbying you and Kenyatta and Councilwoman Blackwell do to deal with domestic violence, but also homelessness in general.
Thank you.
And I thank you guys for what you do. Seven years I've been here, I've been able, my first constituent service case, when after all of the confetti had fallen to the ground and they had sworn me in, the people were sitting at the little party we had outside my office, Little Family, and the first case I got was a homeless case. They told me, yeah, the party was nice, but we don't have anywhere to go. And I'll never forget that and I thank you for being responsive letting, they sent over a team and we got away, it was almost like a salesman at a store. I wanted to solve my first case and thanks to you guys, I've been able to do that. So thank you for what you do. Let me ask a few questions. How many homeless people are there in the city of Philadelphia?
There are a couple of ways to answer the question, but if you count everybody that is in shelter and everybody that's privately placed in shelter or supportive housing, about 15,000.
And of that 15,000, how many of them wind up recurring, recipients of shelter service? Or how many of them matriculate out into some form of permanent housing?
The majority, once they're in the system, do move out. The repeats, I don't really have, I'll have to get back to you on that number.
I mean, that's an interesting statistic, that if we're successfully transitioning them into permanent housing, that's one thing. If they're coming back because of circumstances, we need to address it differently.
Right, and we know that happens.
Okay. What I'm intrigued about is some of the foresight that you had on preventing homelessness. Like I understand it as a program, and we've used it actually, where if you find out someone's in imminent circumstances where they're going to be evicted or things like that, you step up to try to prevent that because it's cheaper to keep them in place than to actually shelter them through the system. Is that close to correct?
That's absolutely.
Can you describe that program, please?
That's absolutely correct. Our housing prevention program can come, can step in when a family is facing eviction. For the most part, it's very low-income families. In fact, it's always very low-income families. And the events that trigger eviction are, interestingly enough, reduction of hours of work, someone who suddenly gets reduced to 20 hours a week from 40, a family event like needing to provide money for a burial or a catastrophic event. And sometimes we just have families who spend badly and they may have not budgeted correctly. We do step in to prevent them from being evicted with funds generally not more than $1,000 per family and the families generally have to pay down some of their arrears to match that. In FY 15, we have assisted, I think, 400, a total of 689 families to date with either security deposits because they're moving into a new unit, rent to forestall eviction, or funds to assist with mortgage to stop a mortgage foreclosure.
So generally, how much money out of your budget goes towards those efforts?
I'm not sure about the exact percentage, but I think the funding, what's about 3 million percentage of 90-something? It's a small percentage of the budget and we know, we know that it's affected.
So my point in asking the question is that find out that percentage and provide it to the chair. I'm of the opinion that if you do the cost analysis, it's cheaper to keep them. And if we can be penny wise and not pound foolish, I think we should appropriate more money towards that end as opposed to catching them on the back end and taking them through the entire system, which is more financially burdensome to the taxpayer. I mean, even my most conservative colleagues would argue and be able to agree, actually, that if we can do $1,000 here versus $5,000, $10,000 on the other end, makes sense. So, and I realize this because at the middle of the year, it's probably a lot of demand for that and it's going by the middle of the year and we're winding up spending even more at the tail end. So if you could justify that in a quantitative manner, there might be some support for that. That guy right up there is a soft touch for helping people, so maybe we can convince him and eight others.
We'll be glad to provide that information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. Let me say thank you and thank the whole team whom I've known forever for the great job you're doing. And let me ask you again, would you repeat those numbers? We know we're saying we're going to get rid of homeless vets. When?
November 11th, 2015. There are about 1,538 identified homeless vets. We've housed a few, over 900. We know where about 400 of the 600 left are because they're in shelter and ready to move into permanent supportive housing, so we have a little over 200 that we're looking for.
That's great. Give me the other statistics you mentioned, 2016, 17?
Oh, ending family homelessness in 20, wait a minute, let me make sure.
I didn't know if I'd live long enough for this day. I'm writing these statistics down.
The federal, the federal goals are to end chronic homelessness in 2017, family homelessness, excuse me, in 2016, family homelessness in 2017, and youth homelessness in 2020. I'll be glad to forward some information about those goals.
Thanks, thank you, I'd appreciate that. Again, thank you and thanks to the whole team, all the folks who we've worked with over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And again, thank you for all the work you do. It's obviously a very important part of the city. No further questions. That concludes our hearing for today. Again, thank you all very much. This committee will be continued until next Tuesday, May 5th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m.